I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting on February 10, 2025 to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Murray. I am the councillor and chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. I would like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given, and if assistance is required, please see the deputy clerk. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. Please ensure that your cellphone is on silent or is turned off, and the Town of Lincoln Committee of the Whole Meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. Closed captioning is available on all of our videos by selecting the closed captioning button on the bottom right of the video. Item number two on our agenda is the roll call. We have members of committee are all in attendance, in person and remotely. We have staff in attendance, in person and remotely, and additionally, we have a representative from the Niagara region and a resident delegation joining us this evening. Declarations of interests. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number four, which is confirmation of the agenda. I would like to request that committee amend the order of the agenda to allow for the Community Services and Infrastructure Agenda to be moved after the Consent Agenda and before the Planning and Economic Development Committee Agenda. I have a motion moved by councillor Micklic. That committee amend the order of the agenda to consider the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee Agenda after the Consent Agenda and prior to the Planning and Economic Development Committee Agenda. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote. Debat?
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. And I'll close that vote, and that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Statutory public meetings? We have no statutory public meetings this evening. Item number six is our Consent Agenda. We are now considering the Consent Agenda inclusive of the Joint Fire Services Advisory Committee Minutes of December 3, 2024, and the Age Friendly and Active Community Advisory Committee Minutes of December 5, 2024. Would any member of committee like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda to discuss? All right, there being no discussion and no requests, I have a motion moved by councillor Pachariva. That all items listed under the heading of Consent Agenda from Monday, February 10, 2025, be adopted as recommended. Joint Fire Services Advisory Committee Minutes of December 3, 2024, and Age Friendly and Active Community Advisory Committee Minutes of December 5, 2024. I will ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
That vote is now open. Thank you. And I will close that vote, and that carries. Thanks, Chair.
I will now ask the deputy clerk to transition to our next committee agenda.
Thank you, councillor and Chair Murray. I will be moving the gavel to councillor and Chair Micklic to assume the chair at this time for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee Agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Debat. We will now begin the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee Agenda. Delegations, 7.1. We have one delegation this evening from the Niagara region. Michael Wilson, manager of Capital Projects Transportation Engineering, will be providing an update presentation regarding the replacement of the 20 Mile Creek Bridge. The Director of Strategic Initiatives and Community Development will provide introductory comments. Shannon, please go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening, Mary Easton, Chair Micklic, councillors, and members of the public tonight. It's our pleasure to be in front of you this evening and joined by Michael Wilson, who you've just heard his title, and Graham Guthrie, who's the Associate Director of Transportation Engineering, as we provide updates on two significant legacy capital projects for our community. The first is the 20 Mile Creek Bridge replacement, and the second is the development of Soa Reason Park. Both the regions' presentation and the park update report are positive and exciting updates. Following Michael's delegation, I will have a few additional opening remarks to introduce the Soa Reason Park report.
Okay. Thank you. Prior to the presentation, I will ask committee proceed with a majority vote to request a time extension until the presentation is completed. I have a motion moved by councillor Rinchema. The committee extend the presentation time regarding the 20 Mile Creek Bridge replacement until completed. Now, just take a show of hands. Perfect. Thank you. Michael, thank you for coming. Apologies for last time when you were supposed to come. We had that windstorm and it's a little bit dark and cold in here, so thank you for readjusting your schedule and making it here this evening. So, let's... looking forward to your presentation.
First of all, thanks. Thanks for having us here. Niagara region is pleased to be able to present our projects that are exciting, especially in the Town of Lincoln. So, members of council, staff, and the public, again, thank you for accommodating us and adjusting your schedule. It definitely allows us to provide an ample opportunity to present. So, I'll go through some items here. There's a few things that you'll notice on here that I'll update verbally as things have progressed significantly from the originally scheduled presentation. I can update that when the slides present it. Here to talk about the replacement of the 20 Mile Creek Bridge, the aerial image shows it. It's located between Jordan and Vineland, just west of 19th Street, which ironically enough, the region and the town have just collaborated on a Jordan-Downton improvement project, which looks great, by the way, so kudos to the town staff for that. So, we're going to continue on with the improvements in this area with the replacement of the 20 Mile Creek Bridge. A little bit of history. Following the completion of an EA process back in June 2022, we proceeded with the detailed design followed by a formal tendering process. The contract was awarded to Urban Link in December of 2024 through our regional council. Just a little side note on Urban Link, they are a local Town of Lincoln-originated construction firm and have ample experience in completing bridge replacement projects, so we're very happy to see them be awarded that contract. Construction was to commence immediately, which has actually started now, for those of you who are familiar with the area or have been through the valley. All of our environmental regulation permitting has been received, so construction has commenced since then. A public information center was scheduled. When this presentation was prepared, that was on January 28. We held it at your Jordan Fire Hall, so again, thank you for the emergency fire services for allowing us to host it there. We were able to do that to provide information to the public. It was... we had the local area residents attended. We tried to get as many people out as we can to spread the word about what is happening and up and coming construction, and then we've received a couple of questions via email following The great thing about this project is it was many key partnerships and collaboration with many stakeholders, the Town of Lincoln being the most with the Niagara region. We needed our partners with Niagara Skartment Commission, Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority, both the operations and community services with both the town and the region. We needed approvals for Department of Fishery of Oceans and Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks. There were many stakeholders commenting agencies that we worked with through this process. The Town of Lincoln and Niagara region have been working on this throughout the environmental assessment process and then through the detailed design as well, and this work will continue and is continuing as we progress through construction. We collaborated on the design, construction timing, to try and receive some cost savings from both agencies, focusing on the administration and the inspection aspects of the construction. This particular project had a unique aspect where the Town of Lincoln, which I won't touch on too much, but the Niagara region, we collaborated on the park improvements that are... will be underway shortly. Shannon will be touching on that a little bit later, but a unique aspect of this, which I wanted to highlight, to tie the indigenous park redevelopment into our bridge replacement, we have... the town was working with an indigenous artist and created some graphic imagery to be presented on our bridge structure, which is not typical and a unique process that we followed. On the north side of the structure, there's going to be a pedestrian access over the structure, and instead of using the traditional aluminum spindle railings, we worked with the town and created these indigenous art imageries that will be used as panels on the pedestrian handrails. So, it will tie the redevelopment of the park to the structure. Provides a unique aesthetic aspect of the bridge structure rather than your typical engineering, concrete, and metal. It'll be unique that way. It was... it seems very simple in concept, but it was very challenging to work through some of the minor details, but I want to thank the town for being... working with us on that because it'll be a definitely added feature to the structure. These are examples of what we've... will be providing there. It's a... it's a piece of the handrail. They will be alternating designs throughout the length of the structure on the north side. This project had a lot of challenging things. We listed all the key stakeholders, which each have their own unique challenge to overcome with permitting and approvals and commenting. We also had the traffic control. One of the key elements of King Street, Region Road 81 through this is it's... there's not a lot of alternatives over waterways, and we were cognizant of the traffic thoroughfare through this area and taking into consideration the emergency access over the bridge as well. So, through the design, we've indicated that we would be using a temporary bridge to keep the traffic flowing while we replace the bridge. It's challenging to do half of a bridge most of the time as the structure element is relies on the other half of it. So, we'll be utilizing a temporary bridge, which they're prepping for now, and this site will be controlled by the temporary traffic signals that are in place currently. The traffic will be switched from one side of the road to the other as needed for the construction facilities, but it will be... will be controlled by these lights for the majority of the duration of the construction, which is... can be looked upon as a negative or a positive thing depending on your approach. The positive aspect is the traffic is maintained through this valley. There'll be a short delay when you wait for the red light to switch to your turn to cross the bridge, but the alternative was a very long detour route, which would impacted emergency services, Niagara Student Transportation Services, garbage collection, snow maintenance, road maintenance, all those aspects for the duration of the project. There will be very minor incidences where we do have to close the road completely to switch traffic from one side to the other, just when we flip it over, but we've planned to do those at night and have minimum impact on it, and emergency services will be notified of that as well. So... I tried to illustrate the... some imagery for the public here to visualize the aspect of the bridge. It's as... these are staging plans, how the traffic will be progressed through the length of the construction. Currently, right now, it is over the south side of the structure while they work on demolishing the parapet wall, the asphalt, and prepping for the temporary bridge on the north side. The second image down on the screen is the use of the temporary bridge. When it's in place, traffic will be switched onto the temporary bridge, which will allow them to start the demolition completely of the existing bridge. The image on the bottom right shows a good image of the temporary bridge being over top of the existing bridge, so the approaches need to be built up. There's enough room to work underneath for the complete demolition as well. So, this helps kind of give a visualization of what we explained for the traffic control. Once the bridge is at a point where it can withstand traffic, we will move the traffic onto the new structure on the south side to take down and demolish the approaches and the temporary bridge, finish the new structure off on the north side, including that handrail that I previously displayed with a three-meter multi-use path, and then they'll open it up to traffic once that is all complete. This is an image of the completed structure. The completed structure will have two 3.5-meter travel lanes, so one lane in each direction, a multi-use, a 3.0-meter-wide multi-use path on the north side with the decorative handrail that we've mentioned previously. It's going to allow a better pedestrian access over the... over the bridge to facilitate the future development of the area, as well as the lanes are a little bit wider than what they are now with the shoulder as well. The construction timing is a major component of this project. With the environmental approvals that we needed to work within, we're limited to work down in the bottom of the creek with the restrictions timing each spring and fall. Given the fish and the amphibious breeding seasons, we have to avoid those. Also, given the staging, keeping one lane open adds another construction element to it that we were able to overcome with the temporary bridge. So, we're taking those into consideration. We've... our construction timing is set that the half of the new structure and traffic moved onto the new structure will be completed by the end of 2025, and then the second half of the structure will begin construction and to be completed in September of 2026. So, it is a fairly lengthy project, but given the... keeping the traffic on and the work that we can and cannot do within the creek area, we don't have a lot of options. We try to accommodate everything that we possibly can, but the good thing about this is traffic will always have access through that valley. Touching on the collaboration with the town, the town's park redevelopment is included in our construction tender as well, and we've indicated those works to be completed by September of this year, 2025. I'll let Shannon touch on any other aspects of that, but we want to make sure that those works were completed in a timely manner as well to allow the park to open up and be utilized by the residents. We do have a regional project page set up. The link is here. That was provided in our notices for construction, the PIC notice, and is now available to staff and public through your distribution of your minutes. That is updated on a timely manner with any significant progress as we work through construction. All our notices are posted there as well, so there's a lot of information out there for the public to reach if it's needed be. And hopefully it wasn't too long with that. Tried to provide as much information as possible, but just once again, I want to thank you for your time today, for allowing us to come and present, and if there's any questions from council, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Thank you very much, Michael. That perfect timing. You were succinct, right to the point, and detailed your presentation very well. I can tell you, there is construction occurring there. There is. It does seem like it's an all-hands-on-deck operation. Things are happening, and I'm hoping it gets done for sure within its timeframe. So, I do see there's some questions from council. We'll start with councillor Brunet.
We'll just have to get councillor Timmers to come out of the queue again. And councillor Timmers, you can go back and think.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to the presenter. Michael, thanks for the presentation. As Chair Micklic commented, I do... did have an opportunity to go through the valley on Saturday on the way to the Jordan Arena 50th anniversary, and yeah, things look really good. The hoarding and the traffic lights with queuing of traffic seem to be working quite well. I'm wondering, without going into a ton of detail, I did participate in the public meeting that occurred at the church in Beamsville maybe a year and a half ago with regards to the design and, you know, what was going to be implemented in this project. And at that point, there were... I remember that evening, there were boards put up with different options that you were offering, and I'm just wondering, you touched briefly on the multi-use path, and you talked about a few things in terms of roadway numbers. I'm just wondering if you could, without going into a lot of detail, if you could just maybe speak to what... the option that you're moving forward with, you know, what was... what were some of the criteria in there that made you choose that option?
So, that option was... came from the preferred alternative following the completion of the EA process. I wasn't actually participating in the EA process, so I don't know all the specific details of why that option was definitively the one that was preferred to be moved forward with. Following the EA process, we have a conceptual design of one lane in each direction with a multi-use path with keeping traffic open, so it's a higher level design requirements, and then we move to the next steps through that. The exact lane widths and size of the multi-use pass would have come through the detailed design with what we can accommodate in the space and do a cost analysis of what those things would cost, which is how we derive to the one lane in each direction and the multi-use path. There's also the... we look at the traffic volumes through the area, project out what the traffic volumes would be for either a 20- or 25-year period. Again, I don't have the specific number of what was analyzed for the traffic volumes, and then we accommodate the future traffic over the structure and through the area as well. That's who we determined. It was a one lane in each direction and not a multi-lane structure.
Thank you for that response. Follow-up, a second question, Chair. So, Michael, as you're probably aware, we have recently, over the last few years, major... made a major investment in the revitalization of Jordan. Jordan Village, 19th Street, the new traffic intersection at the top in front of the Jordan Hotel. So, you mentioned in your presentation about, you know, emergency traffic and just keeping everything flowing. So, you know, we are creatures of habit, and as long as those traffic lights are working and, you know, we don't have inclement weather where people get caught down in there, and then, you know, everybody gets, you know, kind of a little bit stir-crazy, and they start, you know, pulling U-turns and looking for alternative routes. There's not a lot of alternative routes to get through that valley, so really, the only way to get through there is if someone were to bypass and go through the Bailey Bridge and come up through the top. So, the Bailey Bridge is a very narrow, one-way bridge, so the last thing we want to be doing is having traffic deciding that they don't want to go through the Jordan Village or go through the hollow because of the new bridge, and going through the Bailey Bridge and coming up to our new $19 million reconstruction project. So, either through you or to our staff, I'm just wondering what the thought process has been in making sure that traffic is properly flowing through that area, which there's not a lot of alternative routes?
So, I'll answer that first. And if town staff want to add to it, following this, obviously, it's your privilege to do so. So, we've had communications with the Town of Lincoln's Emergency Fire Services. We've reviewed the traffic control plan with them, made some adjustments based on their comments, and we have ongoing communication with them as well. They have the contractor's direct number, so they can reach out if there's any thing that comes up immediately. We've also reviewed it with our traffic control. Our traffic operations staff mainly focused around winter operations because it is in a valley with the slippery conditions that can occur during a winter storm event. We've spoken to them. They're aware of the situation. Our patrollers are on 24/7 shifts. We maintain our roads at a very high standard. They're aware of the situation and can adjust accordingly. They can take preempted measures to pre-soak the roads prior to any storm event coming to mitigate any ice buildup on the asphalt to keep it safe for travel. If people decide to take an alternative route, they can. We're doing everything we possibly can to make it safe and timely manner so they can proceed through the valley with the emergency lights that are... with the traffic lights that are there as well. The Niagara region has a 24/7 dispatch service, so if anything occurs unexpectedly throughout those times, we can respond to it accordingly with our regional operations people as well. So, we have all those things covered. We've also had conversations with NSTS regarding the student pickup. We identified them with the potential delays for the red lights that could occur. They've notified the people that would be impacted by it, as well as the garbage collection as well. So, they've... everybody that's impacted, that would need to facilitate the area on a regular basis for services, have been communicated with directly by either myself or our operations staff.
Thank you. I...
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate that fulsome response, Michael. And if I could just ask a third question. So, through you, Chair, to Michael. So, with regards to making sure, you know, this project is going to run for a lengthy period of time to September 2026, so, you know, it's a long construction runway, and with the timing restrictions in the spring and the fall, I'm hoping that as the project moves along, you'll possibly maybe bring in some portable message signs at the top of each, at the bottom and at the top, so that if there are going to be, you know, extended delays, you know, similar to what you see, you know, on a highway driving with overhead, but you have the portable message signs, you know, that can be out there, you know, warning people, you know, as they're coming into the area, just what's going on. I mean, if that's... if that's required, hopefully, it's on your radar, and it's something that can be incorporated. I'm wondering if that's been... if that's been thought about.
The portable messaging signs haven't been reviewed yet at this point. There will be additional signage that's in the works of being created now. Going back to Urban Link's credit, they are very aggressive. They want to get this project done as quickly as possible for the benefit of everyone involved. So, they've actually started sooner than what we anticipated them starting, so our signage is a little bit slow getting out there. So, there is additional signage coming to notify the more in public of the work. If we need to adjust some timing of the signal or provide some additional information, we can address that as needed as we progress through the construction project.
That's great. Thanks very much for your presentation.
Thank you, councillor. I think there are important points with traffic being rerouted, especially with Google Maps and all of these new technologies that direct people to the shortest route ASAP. Could be right from the highway. We're not sure, but I'm sure... and there's traffic counts that are occurring, both currently and afterwards, so thank you. Next, we have councillor Timmers.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to the presenter. Thank you very much for being here tonight. This is a very large project and an exciting one. I did take a drive-through there on the weekend to get a good look. I think I'm kind of... councillor Brunet kind of touched on it. You know, these projects can become, you know, drawn out, and there can be delays. I'm just wondering, you maybe already answered this, but will the residents be kept updated along the way, and if there's delays, or will we be receiving updates on that... on the progress? I know they've done a... you know, they've done a great job on the region... from the region on the Ontario Street construction that's been happening and communicating with the residents, so just kind of touching on that, if you could respond to that.
Yeah, definitely. We've... I've had direct communication myself with the owners of the restaurant that are directly impacted by the construction. It is happening right in front of their business, so we want to make sure that they're fully aware of the expectations of the construction and what's... how's it going to impact them and the local residents. We do provide updates on our website, the project website. We do it that way. We direct people to that. We have constant communication with the Town of Lincoln staff to provide updates as they need to as well. I believe there's some information being shared collaboratively between the two agencies and provided on your website as well, so the public has ample opportunity to review all that information. We've notified the residents from... basically from Jordan down through the valley up to the other top of the valley of the construction because they're the ones directly impacted by it. We've made them aware of the anticipated construction timing and given them notices with contact information, so if they have any concerns, they can reach out directly to myself as well.
That's great, and I, you know, I think it's really well thought out to keep that traffic flowing. When I went through there on the weekend, it was not an issue whatsoever to wait a couple of minutes to cross over. So, just one other question through you, Chair. You know, this is a massive investment, and what's the lifespan on this bridge do you anticipate? Just a ballpark.
So, through the Canadian Bridge Code, the life expectancy of any structure replaced is a minimum 75 years is what they're designing to. We get... typically get more... We get, typically get more of those, but that's how they're designed to that lifespan.
That's good. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Timmers. Next, we have Mayor Easton. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mike, thanks for your report. I'd like to just touch on the issue of weight control, whether there will be any weight control on the, on the temporary bridge.
The temporary bridge was designed to carry the same volume and weight of traffic as the current one does now. So we, we've actually reviewed it with our operations and emergency services as well to make sure the temporary bridge can facilitate not only the weight, but the width of their vehicles and some overhanging apparatus like the wing of a plow, so the temporary bridge can accommodate all those. There'll be no load restrictions on that.
The walking path, three meters of multi-use path, I don't think that I really acknowledged in the drawings how far that path will actually go up on either side. For this phase, is it limited to the bridge itself?
So the three meter multi-use path for this phase is limited for the structure right now. Over that, we are rebuilding a portion of the road between the park entrance and the, and the structure. Right now, we have it defined as a, as a 1.5 meter wide path. That was our standard at the time, but as you may be well aware of, Mayor, we are, we're going through an EA process right now for the greater area, so that can always be adjusted depending on the outcome of, of that EA. We don't want to be presumptuous and assume something until that process has been completed yet.
Okay. And I know that it is a busy area because the path is also being dealt with at the same time, and I don't think it's going to be done until the spring. So will there be some overlap with that project and, and the road itself that changes to the bridge?
So the bridge is being replaced now, as we've indicated, the multi-use path being built on the structure itself is anticipated to be done in 2026. Once we complete that north side of the structure in 2026, we'll tie it into the park entrance and we'll have to tie it back in on the west side of the structure as well, most likely to the existing driveway, so there's a safe place for anybody that travels over it to, to step down off of it. There's no pedestrian facilities, defined pedestrian facilities as you had westerly at this point in time.
Okay, so you don't have anything at all to do with the contract for the pathway that's down in the, along the 20 Mile Creek?
The region does not know. I'm not sure if town staff can elaborate more on that, but it wasn't part of our bridge reconstruction program.
Okay.
Well, actually, let me just clarify, sorry, just as an understanding, we are replacing the path below the structure that's there now. We're keeping that in a similar facility as it is now and doing limestone staircases up both sides because of the grade differential. So that access underneath the structure where it ties into the, to the Balls Falls Conservation Area and your path is going to be closed during construction but put back as part of the permanent structure.
Right. Okay. So just, I guess I just want to reinforce the whole, the communication with people that we may have to have between yourselves and the town staff quite a different plan for communication as time goes by. I could see 19th Street north and the whole Balls Falls area being pulled into this as people lose patience, but that's another, these things are always through the general course of the project, so we won't look for trouble where it doesn't exist. Thanks very much. Thanks for coming.
Certainly, just one quick comment on that. There's always ways, if there's things we can adjust as concerns or issues arise, we can, we can, we can see what we can do to address that situation for sure.
Sure. Thanks very much. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect, thank you. I don't see any other questions. All good questions. We'll probably touch upon this a little bit, maybe in the report regarding the park with the trail aspect. Thank you very much. I thank the region as well for the extra effort with the design of the bridge. I think it's going to tie in nice with the area. There's going to be, there's going to be inconvenience, you know, by pedestrians, by drivers, by, by many, or people by living in the area, but I think when it's all said and done, it'll be fabulous outcome, so, thank you very much.
I appreciate you guys having me here. Again, if there's any questions, town staff can have my information if you reached out and we can provide a fulsome answer on anything that you might have. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Pachariva. The council, committee receive and file for information the following delegation regarding 20 Mile Bridge Replacement, Michael Wilson, Niagara Region. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. And I will close that vote, and that carries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. 8.2 reports. We will now consider item 8.2.1, Shore, Reece, Sean, Park Project Update Report CS-01-25. The Director of Strategic Initiatives and Community Development will provide introductory comments. Shannon, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mickeluk. So as counsel will recall, in early 2024, the town issued a tender for construction of the park but received submissions that exceeded the available construction budget. In response, we focused our efforts on pursuing additional grant opportunities. We're pleased to report that these efforts were successful, resulting in over $500,000 in funding secured through contributions from the Government of Canada, the Niagara Region, and the Niagara Community Foundation. For the past few years, we've not only been working collaboratively with the region, but with other key stakeholders such as Ontario Heritage Trust to coordinate these intersecting initiatives. We're thrilled to announce that construction of the park is scheduled to begin in the spring with an anticipated completion date in September. As highlighted in the update report, this important collaborative project carries cultural significance for the town, its residents, and Indigenous peoples with ties to the area. It represents an essential step in the reconciliation process. Notably, this will be the first public placemaking project recognizing Lincoln as a traditional territory of Indigenous peoples before the arrival of European settlers. Once completed, the park will commemorate and honor these connections to the land. Aligned with our strategic priority of being a welcoming and connected community through people, places, and natural landscapes, this project demonstrates the town's commitment to intentionally and strategically build exceptional public spaces and amenities while honoring our diverse cultural heritage. We welcome your comments and are happy to respond to any questions on the report.
Thank you very much, Shannon. Things are certainly happening around that area, even with the trail, they're starting the trail as well, which is going to be beautiful, this park. Took us a while to get to this point, but we're getting there. So questions from committee. Counselor Murray.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you to Shannon. Shannon, it looks gorgeous. I love the opportunities for artwork. I think it will be a real well-used park. Its location is phenomenal in terms of being at the beginning of a series of trails, which is also great, but then I look at it and I'm concerned about the parking. There's 30 spots there. I do know that I've heard from some people in the new Jordan Village that the parking lot there, while attractive, has a lot of green space and not as much parking as they would sometimes like. And I'm just wondering if there are opportunities to maximize parking. I'm thinking that if it's a beautiful sunny day and people want to go down there to see the art, to hike up to Balls Falls, to hike up to the museum, that 30 spots might be not quite enough, and then I can really see people parking all along the driveway area and having traffic become a challenge.
So thank you, Counselor, and through the Chair. There's a lot of consultation on the parking, both with our own Public Works Department and also the, the region. One of the main concerns was being able to have emergency vehicles go in and get through the parking safely. It's not, as, as you can see even by the plan, it's almost 50/50 parking to green space, so taking up any more green space wasn't something that the, that the team wanted to do. We are hopeful that people will, once some of the other improvements are done in that area, be able to walk down from other areas of, of say, the village. I know that's a bit off from this project right now. And with it being paved, right now, it's not a paved parking lot, and so we know people generally take up more space than, than a typical parking spot. So, you know, staff have, I would say, somewhat monitored what the parking has looked like on various days. You're right, we won't know how much this new and better park attracts, but we really have had an opportunity to review it and, and feel it will suffice, and I suppose we can, we can take it back and talk to Public Works and, and the region again to see if there is a way to add additional spots.
A follow-up question if I may, Chair. Thank you, Shannon. That's good to know, and, and I recognize, again, it's, it's a, it's a tight spot in terms of, you know, emergency vehicles needing to get there, and absolutely, we don't want to pave it all over and just walk. So I, so I recognize the challenges that we're looking at in terms of maximizing the space. Do we anticipate that we're going to be sending, if we find that there is a challenge, that we'd be sending bylaw down there to make sure that people are parking appropriately? Or is it one of those things that we're kind of counting on people to behave well?
To, to be honest, Counselor, through, through the Chair, I haven't really thought about people not behaving properly, and, and so my mind hasn't gone to asking bylaw to be down there, but certainly where, when necessary, we do have bylaw go into our parks and ensure things like overnight parking isn't happening, so it, it's an option. Safety is our biggest concern.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Perfect. I see Counselor Brunet. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Chair Mickeluk. So through you, first of all, I just wanted to say to Shannon, Shannon, I know as Chair of Community Services for the last two years, I know how hard you and your team have worked to get this project to fruition, so big congrats in, not only in moving the project forward, but getting that external funding, so I know it's been a lot of work, so congrats. So similar to Counselor Murray's comments, I know we don't look for problems, but unfortunately, the reality is, we know when we do some of these things, like at Rotary Park or some of our illustrative signage that we have up in our naturalized areas on Stadlbauer, the damage and graffiti and stuff like that comes in. So I'm just wondering, you know, when we, when we look at doing, I look at the park plan and I look at some of these things that we're going to have here with the artwork and the shade structure, you know, the palisades, all, all this, all this good stuff that we're putting in here, I'm wondering if there has been thought into, you know, the, the coverages, the structures, you know, in terms of how that will react to graffiti. I know we've, we've looked at some of those things in, in some of our other parks. Also wanted to ask about, you know, whether there's going to be any cameras in there. We've, we've, we've had issues in Rotary Park. And again, I understand what you're saying, we're not looking for a problem, but inevitably, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to kind of mitigate whatever might happen moving forward. So I'm wondering your thoughts on that. Directed to Shannon, please.
Through you, Chair, to, to Counselor Brunet. We have, you know, we've thought, we, we definitely will ensure there's anti-graffiti coating on amenities that can have that. And I think to your question about surveillance and cameras, it's something that we're constantly discussing as issues arise in our public spaces. I think we're seeing it in communities where people are adding surveillance cam, cameras. We know that we have the camera in Rotary, which has served us well to deterring people from being there when they shouldn't be there and behavior that's inappropriate. So yes, I, I do think it's not on the plan right now, but we will certainly be looking at that. And I think too, if, if there are some funds, once we finish construction, where we can look at potentially adding a camera, we think it's necessary, we will.
Chair, thank you, thank you, Shannon, for that, that response, Director, Director McKay. Through you, Chair, I'm wondering if I can ask a second question. So similar to Counselor Murray's, I had some concerns about parking. Thank you for those responses. I, I've noticed over the last few months on some of our community pages, I've, I've heard people commenting, I don't see anything here on the park plan, but I'm wondering if there could be a response through you to the, to the director with regards to, you know, what we're doing here for, for washrooms. We're going to bring, we're going to bring hopefully a lot of people into this area, you know, bicyclists, you know, we're going to have educational signage there, rainforest, public art. Hopefully, it's going to be a tourist attraction, but when people get down there, what are they doing for washrooms?
Through you, Chair, to Counselor Brunet again. Yeah, we definitely have thought about that. Unfortunately, the cost of permanent washrooms was just out of scope for this, but we are absolutely putting seasonal portable restrooms in the park, and we may need to upscale them, so instead of one or two, we may, may need to have more, depending on, on the demand and what we see in that park in the future. Those typically go into our parks along, around the Maylong weekend, and they usually stay through till Thanksgiving, which is really when we see the bulk of the seasonal visitors in the park.
And a third question, Chair. Through you, I'm wondering, I, I see our landscape architect, Madison, is here. I'm just wondering, I see on the legend here, I see what looks to be a lot of trees. I'm, I'm just wondering through you if, if Madison maybe can just make a comment about the expectations of trees and tree canopy and shade structure that they will support for that, that area and of the park, future park.
Okay, Madison.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she was.
No, 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 she's here.
I knew she was here, but I thought she was over there.
She's going to.
Okay, great.
Here is here. Here is here. Okay.
Welcome, Madison.
Thank you. Thank you, through you, Chair. So yes, trees are a big consideration. Actually, we've collaborated with the region as well on the tree plantings because through their NEC permitting process, they were removing some trees for the bridge replacement, and so we're actually going to be planning on adding some additional trees to what you see on the plan to make sure that those compensations are met. But in the overall park plan, we wanted to keep it natural, so we wanted to enhance that with those tree plantings, but we also didn't want to have too many trees in the center portion because we did want it to, we wanted to keep it open so that if there's gatherings, there's people under the shade structure, if there's any kind of programming happening, there's still ample space for that. So we really focused our tree efforts towards the pathways, the paved areas to combat the heat island effect.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Madison. Maybe you might not want to go too far. We have another question here.
That's right.
From Counselor Runciamma, go ahead.
Thank you, and actually, my question is for you. I was going to send it through to, to Shannon, but since you're there, and I was going to say to Shannon, I know you're not the landscape architect, but I have a question for you. So there you are. My question is about the rain garden. Can you describe how it works a little bit? I haven't heard of that, but I looked a little bit, I looked up sort of the definition of a rain garden a little bit earlier on and saw that the idea is that obviously the plants in, that are planted in that garden are ones that can handle a lot of water. What if there isn't any water? What happens then? Because we know we have dry, very, very dry seasons, it does happen. Is, is the idea that the, the park is graded toward that pond? And tell, can you tell us more about it?
Sure. Through you, Chair. So yes, the rain garden, we, to back it up, in our process of investigations, we looked at the stormwater management of the, of the whole park. So with the previous parking lot not being paved and now we paved, there's some extra stormwater that will be running off into the park, and we wanted to make sure that it wasn't all going into the creek. So this is a stormwater management tactic so that the water will be able to come from the parking lot and flow into the park, and it's set, it's set in a low point, so that way it'll be a depression and it'll hold that water and then also can infiltrate into the ground. And yes, the plants are planned to be plants that can withstand lots of moisture, but they also withstand droughts too. But because it is. too. But because it is set in a low point, that shouldn't be an issue because all the water will be gathered there.
Okay.
And we'll also have some additional educational signage that's planned for there as well to tell people what the rain garden is, how they could implement something similar into their own landscape as well.
Thank you. How big is the rain garden? It's hard to tell by looking.
I'm not exactly sure of the exact dimensions off the top of my head. But roughly speaking, I'd say maybe like four meters by five meters or so.
Mm-hmm.
With approximately 40 plants in there.
Beautiful. I'm looking forward to seeing that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have another? Oh, perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Padre Eva.
Mickeluk, and thank you, Madison. And just, just a note about the rain garden and the low depression and the holding of water. So we had the similar situation up in Ashby Park. And Counselor Brunet and I got a gazillion questions about it wasn't graded properly and blah, 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 blah. So are you going to have like a little sign that says this is why it is what it is? So people can think that, yes, it was done this way. It wasn't that, we didn't contemplate all these things. And, you know, of course, and then they spiral on, you know, ragging on the town about this, that, and the other thing. So.
Through you, Chair. So yeah, so at Ashby Park, it was actually an absorbent landscape that was designed. So it's a little bit different. This will have plants in it, which at Ashby it doesn't. And, but we do hope to potentially add plants to Ashby to make it more of a rain garden. So it's not just the absorbent landscape, which focuses more on the soils beneath. But similarly, there is some extra soils going into the rain garden that'll help infiltration.
Okay. And with the extra plants at the rain garden, through you, Chair, it won't be as apparent as Ashby.
Correct. You won't see, yes. It'll, it'll look prettier because it won't have just the grass. It'll have the, the plants in there as well, which also help the absorption of water. But yes, there will also be signage that will explain what's going on.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see. I don't see. Thank you, Madison. Thank you, Shannon. Yeah, it's tough. Some of the questions, all great questions. As far as the washrooms, I'm sure the local business owner down there would appreciate, you know, those bathrooms. It's a shame that we have to talk about graffiti this day and age, but unfortunately, it is something that we have to talk about. The, the design, it's going to be a destination. I'm pretty confident of that, that along with the bridge and the artwork that's planned for that. I'm looking, excited for this project moving forward. There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Murray. The committee receive and file information report CS-01-25 regarding Shorea Reshan Park project update. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That is now open for voting. And I'll close that, and that carries. Thanks, Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think, I think I'm done. I think that we're moving on to, back to Counselor Murray.
You're correct, Chair.
Close up the rest of the meeting.
You got it. I'll move the gavel back to Counselor and Chair Murray. One moment.
Thank you very much.
We will now begin the Planning and Economic Development Agenda. We have one delegation for the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda. Please note, the delegations have five minutes to speak. Once we have received the delegation, committee will transition directly into the report and motion. Prior to the delegation, the manager of Planning and Development will provide introductory comments pertaining to the heritage permit application for 4105 Fly Road Camden. Monica, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. In September of 2023, the owners of 4105 Fly Road in Camden obtained provisional consent to sever a new residential lot at the southeast corner of the property. Conditions of consent included obtaining a heritage permit application for the construction of the new dwelling as the existing property is formally designated, and removing the heritage designation associated with the existing dwelling from the new lot. A cultural heritage impact assessment was submitted along with the consent application. The assessment included a number of mitigation measures, which can be found on pages 44 to 45 of the assessment, and concludes that the impacts of the severance and new dwelling to the cultural heritage attributes of the existing dwelling and retained parcel will be minimal or nonexistent. The assessment states that the placement of the proposed dwelling, driveway, and natural screening would ensure that any potential impacts would be mitigated. The Heritage Advisory Committee reviewed both the consent application and heritage permit application for the construction of the new dwelling, and agreed with the recommended mitigation measures of the cultural heritage impact assessment. The Heritage Committee requested that a tree protection plan be submitted to show how the trees along the laneway will be protected. And the tree protection plan was submitted, showing that these trees will not be impacted. The Heritage Committee also requested that a vegetation plan be submitted for screening along Fly Road in front of the new dwelling, and if possible, windows be installed along the wall of the new dwelling facing Fly Road, which I understand the owners have been working on. If the heritage permit application is approved this evening, as recommended by staff, the bylaw to remove the heritage designation on the new lot will be brought forward to council on March 3. And the heritage permit will be issued with recommended conditions, allowing the owner to proceed with fulfilling their conditions of consent, registering the new lot, and constructing the new dwelling. The owner is also here to provide further details with regards to their plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Our delegation for this evening is Linda Marose. Am I saying that right, Linda? Linda Marose, regarding item 7.2.1, Heritage Permit Application for 4105 Fly Road Camden, Construction of a Single Detached Dwelling, PD-05-25. Linda, please go ahead. As noted, you have five minutes. Our clerk will have a timer on, and if you're exceeding your time, you'll hear that, at which point I ask you to wrap it up.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you, committee members, council members, for having us tonight. Yes, in addition, and thank you, Monica, in addition to what you had mentioned about the mitigating conditions, we've got a little bit of an update that since the Heritage Advisory Committee meeting, we have gotten all the permits necessary to proceed with the work for excavating the, the driveway, the entranceway, and then the, installing the sewer connect, you know, I don't know what it's called, the lateral connection, I think, for the sewer hookup. And we actually are meeting with our contractor tomorrow to, to start that work. We understand that there is some, you know, we have to contact inspectors and everything to, before the work can actually begin, but we will do that. And I think we're ready to go then, once we get approval from the committee, you know, for the heritage permit, to proceed. So I thi, I don't think there was any, I brought my computer. I couldn't print today because my printer decided to not work at the last second. But just, oh, as far as the considerations for the, from the Heritage Advisory Committee meeting, which, which requested the windows be placed on the, the garage door in front of the house facing Fly, aside facing Fly Road, we've looked into that, and we've got that. It's in our drawings now. We had probably intended to put green, greenery in front of that, the, at the front of the property anyway. And that is, we submitted a drawing with that on there today. So that, that will likely happen, once we get the build going and everything. So I think, I think that was it for what I just wanted to update the committee about.
All right. Thank you very much, Linda. Does anyone in committee have any questions for Linda specifically about her delegation? Counselor Brunet, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I think, what, I think I mentioned this at the Heritage Advisory Committee, that one of the things, the drawbacks, that really put us to date now, is that we had, we had some issues with our surveyor. And so the company that we hired to do that grading and servicing plan, there were some delays because they had some staffing issues. And that really, it took more, months more than it should have. I think as far as our, our process, I mean, you know, it's, it's like anything you're building, right? It there's, it's just, you know, baby steps. You do one thing at a time, and it, and we've not done this before. So it's, it's been, you know, did we cross all our, our Ts? And did we dot all our Is? And, and, and the town staff have been super helpful. I think I, I really appreciate, you know, Monica, and the other folks that we've talked to for the process. You know, it takes time. So I think it's, it's taken, you know, we're coming up to our, we want to get this done so we don't, you know, pass our deadline. But yeah, I think it's starting to roll now.
That's great. Sorry, Counselor, we just got to get you in the queue. Your microphone's not turned on. Give us one moment.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. So through you, I, I just, I appreciate those comments from the presenter. I think, I think it's important. Quite often, you know, we, we hear a lot of negative connotation about heritage and, and heritage owners, and, you know, the restrictions they have to go on, on, on impact assessments and stuff. And so for, you know, for any residents that are sitting at home, listening to your experience, I think it's good to hear that, yeah, sometimes it is onerous, and it, like you, as you articulated, it's baby steps. But hopefully, the end result will be something that your family, for generations, can, can live with. So, thanks very much, and good luck with everything.
Thank you very much. And, and yes, we, that's, that was a whole intention of having a designated heritage, which does add a few extra, you know, hoops to jump through. But we hope the same thing. For years, it'll, it'll be beneficial to our family.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. My apologies for the mic challenge earlier. Are there any other questions for our delegation? There being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by Counselor Brunet. The committee receive and file for information the delegation from Linda Marose regarding the heritage permit application for 4105 Fly Road Camden. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote. Linda, you may sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and that vote is now open. And I'll close that, and that carries. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. We're now on item number 7.2, which is reports. We will now report, we will now consider item 7.2.1, Report PD-05-25 Regarding Heritage Permit Application, PLHP-2024-001, 4105 Fly Road Camden, Construction of a Single Detached Dwelling. Are there any questions about this report from committee? Counselor Mickeluk, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you to our planning department. So I'm not sure what this, I don't know if it clarified what this property was currently zoned, what, what it, what you're able to do with it prior to the heritage designation. If it wasn't designated, I just want to clarify, like, what I'm hearing from Counselor Brunet and from the delegation. If it wasn't designated heritage, would it have been this difficult to do a conveyance or a severance? What sort of steps?
Thank you. And through you, Chair, the only additional step in this regard is the heritage impact assessment. But otherwise, the applicant has gone through committee of adjustment, as would anyone else, to sever a new lot. It's, so that's the heritage impact assessment, and then the, the heritage permit application as well, because the property is currently formally designated.
Okay. Thank you. And I, just because, like, when I read the report, there was a tree inventory. It looked like there was a lot of work, in my mind, to have to get this conveyance moved forward. And I'm just worried, is there any possibility that by having properties designated, that there would be, you know, this challenges in severances? Would you have to go through this sort of process every time? Let's say if we were to designate the entire Beamsville corridor?
Through, through you, Madam Chair, I think the answer to that is a little bit complex, and it depends on what would shake out. When we look at designating that whole corridor, there might be, you know, with certain properties, the answer to your question might be yes, with certain properties, not. You know, you start to evaluate. There was already a little bit of groundwork in terms of properties that contribute to the overall heritage character and the ones that don't. So for the ones that don't, there would probably be less requirements. But again, it all depends how we structure it. And we heard loud and clear during the initial parts of that study that we would need to implement flexibility. So, you know, in some cases, no matter what, while it does add another step, you know, we often have instances too, where property owners are still supportive of their designation. There's a lot of good things that come out of it. It is an additional step, just to make sure that you evaluate in terms of potential impact on heritage, on heritage attributes. But moving forward, yeah, for something like that, a whole corridor, it would really depend on how we structure policy, and we're not quite there yet.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I think that, yeah, people willing to go through this exercise should be applauded for the extra effort that they make in applying for these sorts of severances, especially when we're trying to create housing, or trying to create new, new opportunities for people to build. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mickeluk. Mayor Easton?
Thank you very much. All right, let's start again. Thanks very much, Madam Chair. I very much appreciate the extent of reporting that went on during this process, just in terms of having the information available about Camden and all of the properties, showing the relationship, one property to another. It isn't very often that we would have an opportunity necessarily to have that body of information available. And especially in this case, to go back and have the indigenous heritage included. I think it's really valuable. I wanted to make sure that this information is going to be available by the library, and also by the, the Lincoln, um, yeah, the, the Lincoln Archives. We've just lost our, our really great historian on these things. And so we need to look for every opportunity to make sure that these kinds of documents that have gone through an approval process don't go by the wayside, and that they're kept safe for the future. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor Easton. There being no further questions, I have a motion moved by Counselor Reimer. The committee approve heritage permit application, PLHP-2024-001, in the name of Walter and Linda Marose, to construct a single detached dwelling on a provisionally approved new lot, subject to the following conditions. A, if archaeological resources are discovered, when excavation of the new house occurs, all work must stop, and a licensed archaeologist will be engaged in accordance with Section 48-1 of the Ontario Heritage Act, to carry out archaeological fieldwork. B, the new house be located in the middle of the lot, to ensure there is sufficient open space in front of the structure, and it is situated a sufficient distance from the existing house to minimize impacts. C, any fencing along the western boundary of the new lot must be natural fencing or screening, consisting of trees and shrubs. Fencing to the rear may be board-on-board for privacy. However, metal fencing and shrubs for screening in this area are preferred. D, the new driveway be located on the east side of the severance. D, the new driveway be located on the east side of the severed lot away from the laneway entrance. E, that a vegetation plan be submitted for screening along the frontage of the new lot and that windows be installed at the frontage of the dwelling and/or garage if possible. And F, that the heritage designation associated with the Moyer-Marrows house be removed from the new severed lot by amending the legal description and designation bylaw 2020-42. I will now ask our deputy clerk to open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That vote is now open. And I will close that vote and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Devan. We will now consider item 7.2.2, Report PD-066-25, Housing Select Committee Annual Update. Our senior planner will provide introductory comments. Josh, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, for that and good evening to everyone here. Last year was a very productive year for the Housing Select Committee. We built upon the previous work done by previous committees and task forces and we really looked at, A, what kind of town assets can be used to help support projects, but also getting into the nitty gritty details of what is the town's demand here for low and moderate income housing. So, on those lines, we went through, we reviewed the town official plans, housing policies, looking at how not only to conform with official plan or planning policies from the province, but also interviewing housing providers who have developed housing to see what makes it easier for them to build new housing. So, how do we remove obstacles? How do we put more certainty for them, reduce costs, make it easier to build? We also, in those interviews, looked at what are the trends that are happening in the development of new housing, just looking at, you know, what it actually takes to get housing off the ground because it's changed significantly in the past five years. Recently, a report came out saying that construction costs for these developments have gone up 100% over the past five years. We had an education session with council. It took a lot of work to prepare that. And building off of that, looked at, you know, what town-owned lands we could use for new sites. At the time of that memo, BDSS had not been obtained yet or purchased yet from the town. And lastly, we were also working on a housing needs and demand study. Now, one of the challenges of being a small rural municipality compared to a larger one is that it's a lot harder to find housing trend data. So, you really have to dig deep into the local area to find those trends. And so, we've created a detailed analysis showing what actually is required here for low and moderate income households. Looking to next year, we're hoping to build off that. But we're also looking more on actually getting partners, organizations to come to Lincoln and actually build affordable housing. It's not a quick process. And so, doing that takes a lot of work. On average, it can take a minimum of four years to get from project concept to an occupancy permit. And that is based on the interviews we've had with regional developers from the nonprofit sector. That's a little optimistic in itself. So, building on that, we're going to be looking at finalizing a rating system for new developments just to compare how new residential developments meet our housing needs. We're looking to also build off community support. One of the things that committee members and I experienced at one of the community meetings on poverty that happened in December was that there's a lot of questions about how housing gets built, what kind of needs are here. So, we're really looking to continue building on that, that groundswell of information to show that it's not just, you know, the typical low-income households that need housing. It's also for people earning minimum wage and people looking to get into the housing sector. And lastly, we're looking to continue the education support as well as building activities. How can we support that? And continuing to educate council and members of the public on how our housing needs can be met within Lincoln. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Josh. Are there any questions from committee? Yes, indeed, there are. Councillor Jimenez, can you please begin?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the report. I have a question about on page three. Josh, you talked about finalizing a rating system for new developments. The committee is currently in the process of creating a rating system for new developments. The purpose is to identify whether a site is suitable for affordable and attainable rental and/or ownership housing and how well it addresses the town's housing goals. And the ranking system will help staff keep track of the type of housing proposed in Lincoln and monitor progress in meeting councils' affordable housing targets. So, how would that conversation look, for example, if someone came in for a pre-consultation meeting or a pre-consultation meeting and said, "This is what I'm thinking to do"? How would that play out in that conversation?
Thank you. Through you, Chair. That's a really good question and it really depends on a site-to-site basis. You know, we do have people coming in with proposals to say that they're going to be purpose-built rental. And whenever we do get those, we often encourage them to look at programs that can improve affordability. There's not too many nonprofits out there who are looking or interested in building housing in Lincoln or are hoping to change that. But whenever we do get a nonprofit in, in terms of our proposal, like we did with Menno Street, we look to expedite it as quickly as possible. But at every opportunity, we look to see what sites are ideal or suitable for affordable and purpose-built rental and which are not. And we kind of go from there.
Thank you. So, it sounds a bit like the idea is just to sort of assess each development and use this sort of as a tracking system to make sure, whether we're meeting our goals or not. It's not really sort of a set of criteria that we can enforce necessarily, but it's part of the conversation and just to make sure that we're looking through those glasses at every development that comes, at potential development that comes in the door. Is that right?
Through you, Chair, that's correct. We can't enforce anyone to build affordable housing, but we can identify sites that are more suitable. For example, if someone wanted to build, you know, affordable housing in Camden, we would probably say it's probably not an ideal place. The more ideal places would be, you know, in Beamsville. So, it's more of, it's also just to help inform members of the public, council, where the most ideal sites are based on CMHC criteria and other criteria and to help encourage housing where its most or its best location is.
Okay. And I have another question, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. The reaching out to housing providers, we went on a tour of Indwell's, some of their buildings in Hamilton a few years ago. Have, do we have an idea of what partners we might be looking to or what providers we might be reaching out to?
Through you, Chair. So, we have. It started last year. We actually reached out with Indwell. We're reaching out to Niagara Region Housing as well as Niagara Y. Part of the challenge is it's really hard to build nonprofit housing. And traditionally, nonprofit housing or co-op housing was built as one-offs. So, there isn't that organizational capacity. Like, for example, large, in the private sector, you've got these large builders, right, that have scales of economy that go from municipality to municipality. And so, you'd never really obtain that in the nonprofit sector. We're seeing that change slowly in the nonprofit sector, but the change is slow just because of how difficult it is. With Indwell, part of the challenge is, or I shouldn't say with Indwell specifically, but because Lincoln's housing need is different than larger municipalities, they may not see Lincoln as a first priority. So, what we're really looking at is seeing who is better suited to meet our needs. But we're working with everyone. We're casting our net out and seeing whoever's interested and working with them.
Always a challenge. What's important is that everybody's keeping it on their plate and keeping it as a priority and something to consistently review. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Timmers, you're next, please.
Thank you, Chair. So, the committee's been doing a really great job, I feel, engaging most of our partners, our nonprofits that are in the area. And, you know, we've been holding a lot of different sessions and looking at our land options and looking what we have available in the town of Lincoln. And we're really focused on understanding our housing needs within the town of Lincoln and trying to really get a scope on what do we really need here. And some of our challenges are those partners. And when we meet with them, we're hearing, and Josh, we've discussed this many times, we just don't have the services here to wrap around certain types of development. And so, lack of services is a problem to bring the kind of housing that we're really hoping to do. And those, we're hoping that if we build it, those services will come. But the nonprofits are saying, "You need the services first." You know, "You need to have things in place for us to come and for it to work." So, those are some challenges that we discuss amongst the Housing Select Committee. And we also talk about building community support and education of the community because if the community doesn't get behind what we're trying to do and support it, it's very difficult. And we've seen it with some of the applications that have come forward when community members are opposing affordable housing. They don't want it, you know, the nimbyism. So, I think that's a big piece as well. And thank you, Chair, for letting me talk. But I've been on the Housing Select Committee for many, many years. So, and this is a very important report that's coming forward. So, I do have a question. So, through to our planning, you know, there are some barriers with our nonprofit partnering with us. And what kinds of things, I know we've talked about how we can make it work. And if you could just maybe through to Mr. Bruder or to Josh, what kinds of things can the town do around those barriers, around development, around fees, around the cost and land? If you could just comment on those things. It's really more for the public. Thank you.
Through you, Chair. So, there's a few ways that we can tackle it at the municipal level from a, or at least a planning perspective. So, I think some of the uncertainty that a lot of nonprofits have is going through the zoning process. So, we're looking at how we can make the official plan and zoning policies as streamlined as possible and as permissive as possible for nonprofit housing providers specifically, just because they need all the certainty they can get and time is money. So, they need things to be sped up. Speaking of speeding things up, one thing that we heard loud and clear is that timelines need to be expedited for development reviews. And one thing that they noted is because they don't have that development experience. It requires more, I don't want to say hand-holding, but more guidance from staff as they go through. And we've been looking at that and actually implementing it when we do receive inquiries. We're quite engaged. We provide comments early and often. We don't require formal pre-consultations. Everything's quite informal. So, we kind of look at things at a very quick pace. In terms of fees, development charges and cash-in lieu have been waived just because of provincial policy changes as well. And I'll let my director, Matt Bruder, add anything else if I've missed it.
Yeah, thanks. And through you, Madam Chair, I mean, I think on top of those things, some of the challenges and constraints aren't necessarily on our end. As Mr. Workington was stating, it's just intrinsically difficult to get these projects off the ground. A lot of times, you need to have that initial provider, the start of that conversation, that's going to come to the town and initiate a project. Then you've got to have, again, some other levels of collaboration. You've got to look at the pro forma. How do you make it work? How do you bring down costs while still offering the type of housing that's needed? So, then you need to work with other possible stakeholders, who's going to manage the property. So, it's bringing everything together. It's not necessarily barriers that we're causing on our end. It's more, there's a multifaceted approach to these things. Some of the other things too, there are certain instances where there is pushback from residents. That's something we have to navigate a little bit. I've seen it in other municipalities too. It's nothing that's just specific to here. Trying to navigate some of the public sentiment where there is some, that's a key piece. But it's all about bringing partners to the table and then it's also about, and what the Housing Select Committee is already working on, which is finding a suitable site.
Well, thank you for that. And, you know, when I said barriers, I think I just meant challenges. And I'm not putting it on the town specifically. But thank you, Chair, for allowing me to make those comments. And I know my other colleague who sits on the Housing Select Committee has some comments. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Timmers. Councillor Mclough, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you to Josh. What are we hearing from developers? We've got two elections that are about to take place. We've got a provincial one. We have housings on the topic there. We have a federal government that's, we have a leader that's resigned and everyone's talking about how much they're doing for housing, all these programs, all this, you know, making, incentivizing developers to create housing. Yet, when we look at applications, it seems to be us that are trying to, you know, incentivize housing at the municipal and regional level. What is the problem, in your mind, if you can provide an opinion, with the federal and the provincial programs that are offered that they're not really being jumped at?
Through you, Chair. So, I believe that next month, we're going to be bringing a memo or a report to council through the Housing Select Committee on this very topic at a very high level. It's not multi-residential unit pro formas that private developers use are very sensitive. And so, once you start introducing affordable units into the mixture of that development, it really makes it hard to make it for a private sector pro forma or a viability analysis. From the nonprofit side, what we've seen is an actual decrease in capital funding for new projects. So, I'll keep it a very high level, but essentially in the past, you're able to get probably around $130,000, $150,000 per unit towards, in capital funding towards a new project. There are obviously some constraints with that, but under the new system, you're typically getting maybe only, maybe $30,000, $40,000 per unit. Part of the reason is the federal government has really looked at providing more operating funding. So, in terms of lowering mortgage costs, the construction loan costs rather than the capital. In doing so, you reduce the long-term operating costs because your interest rates are so much lower than they would be through a private financier or a private bank. But fortunately, there's no capital funding. And so, that capital funding part from the feds has really been lacking, particularly because since 2020, the construction costs for nonprofit housing have gone up by 100%. So, what we really need is more dedicated capital funding from the province, which is not, which is somewhat non-existent for just regular rental and affordable rental and more capital funding from the feds. So, that's at a very high level, but we could be here all night talking about what else needs to be done.
No, I appreciate that. I just, through you, Chair, like, I just, if we need to advocate, like, to change these programs that are currently in place that I just don't see them being jumped at. I think that if they were good programs, like, nobody's going to say we, at any level, you know, "We have these programs and they're just no good." I mean, everyone's going to say they're the best. "We don't understand." But I think we have to advocate to try to make them more, you know, usable or appreciated by the developers to truly incentivize them and not just check off a box that says, "Yeah, we're trying." I mean, I think we have to, we have to actually try with purpose. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mclough. Councillor Brené, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Murray. So, I appreciate the report. I appreciate the comments that I'm hearing. As councillor Timmers articulated, I think probably if you look around the horseshoe, most of us at some point over the last eight years have sat on this housing committee. And yeah, there's been some great discussions, some great dialogue with a number of proponents and organizations and partners. But I think, you know, quite often over the last five years, you know, we seem to be really chasing our tail. And when I say that, I say it in the fact that quite often, as Mr. Workington has articulated, you know, cost of building is not going down. Costs are coming out of COVID and you mentioned 100% increase. Costs are not going down. Recently, I had the opportunity to sit in on a meeting with a particular interest party with regards to the BDSS site with CAO and Director Bruder. And I think we heard in that, in that meeting that just some municipalities in our, in our region our region, Fort Erie and Port Colborne have been working on projects for eight years, for eight years, spinning the wheels with CMHC applications, which sometimes are very onerous, and just not having the right partner. So through you, through you Chair, maybe to the CAO, we have this BDSS site, we have a canvas now of 16 acres, where our skin in the game could possibly be land that we could give to a proponent to our organization. I'm just wondering, through you Chair, to the CAO, if you could comment on, on your thoughts on us finally bringing a affordable housing project to Lincoln on the BDSS site.
Through you, Madam Chair. To Councilor Brene's question and maybe to all members of council. Councilor Brene is correct, I was part of a meeting dealing with a local contractor who was definitely delving into the area or into the field of affordable housing, not-for-profit housing. And it was an interesting conversation, in some ways, a lot of fact-finding, as a number of people are doing when they hear, now that we own a piece of property within our precinct, our downtown precinct, which is closer to a lot more services and it's very accessible. Are we closer than we've ever been? Yes. Does that mean we're close, where I could see something happening and getting constructed in the next year? I still don't think we're that close. There's a couple of things that need to happen. We now have some skin in the game, for lack of a better word, we own some land, but that's one piece of it. So making land available, we will be in front of you in the coming months with a report that speaks to that exactly, speaks to what we're hearing around BDSS, speaks to some of the opportunities, speaks to some of the challenges. But, but the land piece becomes one piece where we can check the box, where historically maybe we didn't have that potential opportunity. But beyond that, it's about bringing the right people to the table. If we heard one thing in that meeting more recently, it was, who are you going to bring to the table to start operating these facilities? Is it Niagara Regional Housing who we need to partner with? Is it a group like Port Cares? And that's the Port Colborne example. In Fort Erie, it's the Lions. We have a lot of groups here. We have some local groups that may potentially be interested, but it's about bringing them to the table to address that other piece. Niagara Regional Housing and a couple of these proposals owns a percentage of the units in the building. It gives them skin in the game and they have the expertise to go out and get money. I think about CMHC and the work they're doing, the ability to make application, the ability to secure funds. So it's a number of things that need to come together and I think Councilor Brene is correct. It's taken a number of organizations, eight, nine, 10 years potentially, to be, to be at a point where now, construction is about to happen. I think when we think housing here and we say, well, why isn't one of these housing providers like Indwell or others coming to town? I think the way housing looks in Lincoln is different than the way housing looks in St. Catherine's, than the way it looks in Hamilton and it looks in other communities. And so, we don't have the same visible housing issue. Director Bruder and his team often talk to you about the missing middle. They talk to you about more affordable products for a number of residents. And yes, community, how the community feels, you know, I'm trying to be careful when I talk about community engagement as it relates to housing. It is a key part of it. How we ready the community for some of these things that need to potentially happen? I think that's, that's also a key part of what we do. So, you know, the land is one piece, as I've said to you. You know, the community and readying the community is another piece. Bringing partners to the table, you know, is that third piece. And then getting funding, whether that funding come from Niagara Regional Housing or it come from CMHC, those are all things that I think need to come together. So we're starting to, I think, check the boxes off on the four or five things that need to be in place for us to create affordable housing in our community. But it will take a few more of these things coming together in a little bit more time. Like I said, I could come to you in the next cycle and tell you, we will make a piece of land available within BDSS's boundary. That doesn't mean there's going to be people knocking down the door to build affordable housing in our community. So it's about those other things that need to happen. And, and I think, you know, council support, the community support to make those things happen. So maybe I offered those comments and can definitely expand on those if council has any further questions, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Councilor Brene, I'm sorry, I can't see your mic. Are you, are you finished or are you, did you have more questions to ask?
Just through you Chair, so I appreciate the CAO's response and his comments, you know, through you, through you Chair to, to the CAO. So, Mr. Krokopoulos, when you talk about, you know, the look, or I think the word you used, the visual of what housing looks in Lincoln might be different than what it looks in St. Catherine's or somewhere else. I'm just, I'm struggling with that and I'm struggling with the fact that, you know, when we get some of these organizations in front of us and we start talking about housing, you know, how do we, through you Chair to the CAO, how do we convince an organization like Niagara Regional Housing that the need is now? And the need is, you know, the need is real in Lincoln. Like, we've got two Niagara Regional Housing properties here on Queen Street and John Street that were built in the 1980s. They, in a lot of ways, you know, have, have outlived their, their, their building. And, you know, and I think some of the, some of the struggles that organizations have is, how do we maintain these buildings? They're aging, they're aging infrastructure. So I see NRH, Niagara Regional Housing, making commitments to other areas of Niagara. And that's great. That's wonderful. But we have a need here in Lincoln. So how do we get organizations to Niagara Regional Housing, like Niagara Regional Housing, to the table to convince them that the time is now in Lincoln?
Through you, Madam Chair. Maybe to just provide some clarification, when I said homelessness, housing, affordable housing looks different in different communities. I mean, you know, we have housing providers across our community and they're across this province. You know, I think sometimes there's a burning platform in certain communities that forces the conversation. That is not to suggest that we can't have those types of conversations here. I think that's what we're starting to do and that's what we're, that's what we're seeing here. The land piece is a big piece of it. I'm not saying that land is not a part of it. We really didn't have that land conversation before today. There are some smaller sites in our community. Councilor Brene and I have toured some of them. A number of you have toured some of them. I think about Bee's Place, adjacent to Bombberry Park, adjacent to BDSS. A small facility owned by the Y now, where they're looking to do something there. But then, the Y is stretched across this region, doing a number of other projects. I think about Bethlehem Housing. We've had conversations with them. Is there an easy answer to how we make it happen? It isn't. I think this council's unanimous in full support in terms of either providing direction, in terms of setting some key markers in the ground and key, I think directives to staff to say, go out there and make it happen. Prioritize this as the priority for what's happening. It's not this on the corner of the desk and everything else. It's, if this is the priority, go out, be ready to bring back a report that says dispose of this land, provide that very clear direction that this is what you want to happen and then we can bring a proposal back to you. It is a couple of other things that need to happen. It will require those other things. So when we get to public consultation, council again needs, needs to remain steadfast in your support of wanting to make sure that affordable housing proceeds. I can go through each of those four checkpoints. Surplus municipal lands, securing funding, community engagement and partnerships. Each of those are going to require a commitment from all of us around this table to make happen. So if that's council's direction, then absolutely, we can go out and make those particular things happen. There are experts, there's people who are in this crowd this evening who can talk to us about CMHC and what those applications look forward to. That one individual company that Councilor Brene was referencing, talked to us about certain skillsets that they have and that others have at Niagara Regional Housing that they've dealt with in particular, in terms of being able to make these particular applications. So again, we can pull these together, but if it's a priority, we need to put time, energy and resources towards those priorities.
So through you Chair, if I could ask one final question, a third question. So, Mr. Krokopoulos, I appreciate that response very much and it kind of leads quite nicely into my last question. And this is not in any way, shape or form to be a negative to our staff. I think our staff has done an admirable job with, you know, the other responsibilities that they have every day, every week, every month. But have we, have we got to the point, we heard it from the particular partner that we talked about, in that I think his direction directly to you across the table was that if we're going to be successful, what is probably required is, is someone that would be dedicated, you know, to this, a champion, a project manager, call it whatever you want, but someone that would be dedicated to bringing a housing project to fruition and getting shovels in the ground. And with that, as you've already alluded, commits to a commitment of funds and putting stuff in a budget. So I'm just wondering through you if, you know, if you think we're to the, to that point? And, you know, will, can we expect, you know, as a council, that we will be hearing from you on this in the future?
Through you, Madam Chair. Absolutely, Counselor. I think we are at that point where we need to make it a focus. And either that happens internally by freeing up work that others are doing to focus on this, like we do when there's a crisis, like we do when there's any other type of issue. Or it's about me being in front of you and saying, we're going to have to bring in additional temporary contract staff otherwise, that solely focus on this particular issue. So absolutely, I will be in front of you on that.
Thank you, Chair Murray.
Thank you very much, Councilor Brene. Councilor Njima, I'm going to let you back in.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about, I attended a, I think it was in the large room at the Roma Conference on the last day about homelessness. And yes, we all talked about homelessness a lot. We've talked about needs for housing. We've all, you know, it's a huge, huge, complex problem, but I took some notes and I wanted to outline what they said and I thought it was interesting. Homelessness has increased in Ontario 154% over the last nine years despite the doubling of investment from service providers. They talked from a very macro level about two ideas to really deal with housing issues, again, on a macro level. The first thing they said, and this puts a lot of pressure on us unfortunately, is to affix rural homelessness. In other words, deal with the reasons that people are leaving rural areas and heading into cities. And while that puts a lot of pressure on us and our budgets, it also speaks to something that's really important to us and that's keeping families together in our rural community. They also spoke similarly to one we heard from Past Stone Mental Health here about a year ago. They were saying that in order to impact mental health with people generally and in the long run, they're focusing on youth. The answer lies there. Help young people experiencing mental health issues, help them develop coping skills and that's an effective tool. These are huge problems and the way to really get at them in the long run and to think long-term is to help young people. So what they were saying is that we know that if we focus there, we will have impact. Similarly, the housing issue is complex and needs a long-game focus. Unfortunately, we can't do it all and they feel that if we focus on housing and supporting youth and ending youth homelessness, it will have a positive effect. They told us that generally, once you find a home for a young person, in many cases, they don't, you don't hear from them again in terms of needing supports. Of course, there are exceptions to that rule. I don't want to share that perspective because it's interesting. And those are the high-level recommendations that came out of that discussion. And also, another note that I took was Minister Calandra said that he will be supporting additional units on long-term care properties. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing those details, Councilor Njima. Councilor Patrieva?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Murray. Josh, thanks for your report. And having been the other counselor that sits on the Housing Select Committee, it's eye-opening. But you know what, we've, and Councilor Brene alluded to it, like we've been on this kind of merry-go-round for eight years now. And, you know, I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to visit the building in Port Colborne, at Port Cares. The charity I'm involved with made a commitment to that organization and I delivered our third of four checks to them. And Christine Clark-LeFleur, who runs Port Cares, used to be the student council president at Beenzel High when we went. And I was the grade 12 rep at that time. And she told me, and she walked me through the building, and she was proud as a peacock. And she told me that this building will open end of the month, they're going to have a ribbon cutting, they're going to be moving residents in March the 1st, 42 units, mortgage-free. So Josh, you're, you're, you're our resident expert on this. So what's the, is, is the number one mitigating factor in an affordable housing, build the land?
Thank you. And through you Chair, there's a number of things that make affordable housing developments possible. One of the most important is land, but there are several other factors. As was mentioned today, you need experience, you need a development team that helps gets it going. But without land, you, it's very hard to get anything, any kind of traction going. So Port Cares was able to get land and that really helped them, give them the stability to spend the money to do pre-development work and really feel comfortable that the investment, which can take, you know, one, two, $300,000 to do all that work, which isn't cheap, especially for a charity, to move forward with that. So land is, is important, but there's also a lot of different factors.
Councilor Bruder, please go ahead.
A couple of times now, Madam Chair. Through you to the counselor. I think, yeah, obviously, land is an important piece for sure. It's one of, you know, it's one of the first things from which you can build, obviously. But when you hear from, you know, successful projects and things, a lot of it is, you need a housing provider at the table. It kind of starts there in terms of how they coordinate, we coordinate with them, or a municipality coordinates with them. Then from there, there's so many other things that are critical. Looking at, you know, the construction costs, again, I mentioned it before, how do you whittle that down a little bit in, you know, an environment where we're seeing those costs increase? That's a critical factor because, quite frankly, it gets hard to not only construct, but then operate these buildings given what the costs are. So that is a significant piece at all, or as well. So while land is a very important component, there's actually a lot more challenges. Some of them, in some, you know, sense, can be a little bit more challenging even than that, is what we've been hearing. So it's an amalgam of things.
Okay. Through you, Madam Chair. Second question to Josh and Matt. So again, like, we always say, why reinvent the wheel? Right? So Port Colborne's smaller than us. They've actually come up with an in-the-box solution that works. And after I went there, like, they've worked with their contractor, builder, designer, you know, to, to limit costs on things, to make suggestions. One of the things that she was thrilled about was their, their heating and cooling system. Like, it's state-of-the-art. So, and I came back and I was over the moon and I said to Josh, we need to get this gal to our Housing Select Committee. We need to, like, the model is there, they're smaller than us, we're more centrally located. And, and so, just your thoughts on that? Like, and we talked about organizational capacity. So is that, is that the second thing? Like, if you have a willing group, come forward with the land? Because we had, we had a, a group come forward, there was a piece of land identified and then the price tripled. So they went away. So is it better to work? Like, these outside organizations don't know our landscape. We know our We know our landscape better than anyone else. So if someone local were to come to the forefront with this solution and the land is provided, could it work?
Through you Madam Chair, I think it definitely could. I think it is a good model to go off of and absolutely, if you can, you know, find a local provider, or even a provider that's not so local but has some local context, that's really the key, because you need to work with them hand-in-hand, then they need to work hand-in-hand with a potential constructor who knows what it costs to build things and knows how to mitigate those things. Working all in tandem together and communicating with each other while dealing with some of the other challenges, absolutely, I think it could work.
Okay. And third one, if I may, and I can't remember if it was Mr. Krokopoulos or Josh, the item, the comment was around certainty, right? So you need certainty in order to enter into something like this. And like Counselor Burnet, we've been at this for eight years, right? And construction costs aren't getting any cheaper, but the need is getting worse, right? When I brought the motion forward a couple of years ago about homelessness in Lincoln, I got looked at with, like I had three heads. And now we see people living in Stadler Bar Ravine, and we see people couch surfing, and we see people down at the railroad tracks, and we see people over by Eric Way Tire. So if you can't see this, and you don't know it's right on your doorstep, then you're blind. So I think it's time that, that we, you know, we, we make a commitment as counsel to say, okay, enough is enough. Let's us be the lead on this, and I'll be bringing forward a notice of motion by the direction of our Madam Clerk at our council meeting on March the 3rd, that we actually go down the path to doing something about this. Mr. Krokopoulos, you okay with that?
Through you Madam Chair, while I don't know all the details of that Counselor, I'm okay with it in principle, yes.
Okay, well, I've got it here, but I'm going to save it, because I don't want to get in trouble from the clerk. Like you, I'm afraid of them.
Thank you very much Counselor Patrieva. Counselor Reimer, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair Murray. Thanks Josh for the report and to the, to the rest of the committee. Great conversation. I think the, the work that the committee is undergoing now is essential to next steps here, so I want to applaud them for the work they've done, but also, you know, encourage them to get this housing study and the demands, the needs finished off. I think that's essential to our, to our next steps. I've always assumed that BDS will have a affordable housing component to it, and in my, you know, way back when we were, we were in camera talking about this, that was, for me, that's just, that's just going to be part of it. So as one-ninth of council, I, I fully support leveraging BDSS. That's a huge part of it, I think, is the land component. So however we want to leverage that, what we've purchased BDSS for and what the actual value of that land for, somewhere in there, there has to be a, an area that we can land on and be able to certainly help out with land and servicing and those kind of things. But I will bring up a couple of things that Counselor Burnet brought, started down that road and the CEO picked it up. Coming from fresh out of budget season, this will involve increased costs in staffing. Either that or something else takes a backseat. And so I think council has to realize that if we say, you know, pound our fists and say we want action, we want to do something, which I fully support, there is costs that are added to that. They might not be upfront costs, but they are, there certainly aren't hidden costs, but they are, there is, there is costs involved to pursuing this that are not in our budget currently. Okay? So when it, when we say yes, supposing we say yes to this and it comes down the road to next year's budget, and all of a sudden we see an increase, that we don't then come back on staff and say, well, you got to do twice as much work for the same price. So that's my one comment. And I say, Mr. CEO is great at using his words and he says the will of council. So what he's saying is, if we say one thing today, we can't say something else down the road. So that's the will of council. So, and, and that's looking around the circle here and saying, if we all mean it, then we should be standing behind it. And I, I support it, there is cost to it. I don't think it's, I just have always assumed that it's going to be part of the BDSS solution. Whether we leverage BDSS property for another property that comes up, if this needs, study indicates there's another piece of property in BDS that's more suited for affordable housing, we go and approach them and say, hey, how about you want a piece of BDSS and we'll give you, you know, because we want to put affordable housing there. That, that type of thing, I think we need to be a little more aggressive, maybe to Counselor Patrieva's point, with what we're doing here. But I think more than anything that we've done, the will of council is essential. And I'll add one little caveat to that, and I apologize Counselor Murray, because I'm, I don't have a question here at all. But I think these points are, because we're just fresh off budget season and we like to be, you know, we like to give it, give it our all in budget, and sometimes at the staff expense, I think we need to be aware of these things. This might stretch over a year or two. We just said it was, from Mr. Workenden said it's four years from conception to occupancy permits, and we were pretty adamant with staff that we wanted this done in a year. We don't want carrying costs for more than a year. So part of the cost is carrying costs, and I would suggest to you that we'll need another two or three years of carrying costs. So when that comes time for budget, that we're not all of a sudden scared and throw up the, the flags and say we're not doing it. Because that's part of the will of council, that, that's all, the way I see it is involved in that. So I was already prepared not to get this done in a year. I kind of knew it's going to take two or three. So the carrying costs, we know what they are, they perform, they were, they, they almost come to 1% of our, Charlotte's not here, but 1% of our, our increase this year on our, on our tax levy, that was almost 1%. That's going to come, in my mind, the next two years, unless we find money from somewhere else. So just those comments, and I apologize for no question Counselor Murray, but thank you for, for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you very much Counselor Reimer. Counselor Russell, please go ahead.
Thank you Madam Chair. Through you to probably our CAO, just with reference to both Counselor Patrieva's point and the, the advance notice on the notice of motion, and also Counselor Reimer's points about BDSS. Again, I am greatly intrigued about some of those possibilities, and again, without knowing the specificity of what Counselor Patrieva is bringing forward down the road, I'm wondering from our staff and to the CAO, when can we expect, again, a generalized or more specific plan on what we can do with BDSS? And I'm just wondering on potential costing, I know there are business cases being worked on, I'm not sure if we're done all of our community engagement yet on potential possibilities, but looking at the feasibility of this, like I don't want to start hacking off portions of that land if we don't yet have a plan for the rest of it. So again, I think that should come first before we actually get specific on intended uses, because again, this is all going to come down to, as much as we have all great intentions, but there are going to be a lot of dollar and cents that we have to make sure are aligned before we go forward.
Through you Madam Chair, to the Counselor, and coincidentally, staff met this morning to talk about BDSS and the next steps and when and how we're going to find ourselves being in front of you. So I think, instead of bringing one, one massive report forward, I think we may parse this out and start bringing various elements forward to discuss with you, whether that be the consultation, whether that be some of the historic analysis that was done both by ourselves as well as Deloitte, and I think be in front of you on multiple things, because you're right, there's a lot here. It's not all about wrapping it into one report, debating it for an hour and a half, and then we're moving on and a decision is made. So I think the conversation probably, or at least the next few steps, will be us, I think coming forward with various parts of the BDSS conversation. So I would suggest to you in the coming weeks, you're going to hear from us on the various pieces, but I'll, I'll say it now, I'll say it publicly, I'll say it privately to you, your patience on each of those pieces. It isn't one big bow that I'm going to wrap this up for you. There is a lot of complex, moving pieces to it. I think we throw words out like, well, there's a business case by Deloitte. There's multiple business cases and multiple models and multiple scenarios that BDS, that Deloitte has ran, and there's no point in coming forward with things, I think to your point Counselor, that are untenable or unfeasible, and, and that don't make a lot of sense. And so there, there does need to be some level of rigor and analysis that's done before we start just sharing a whole bunch of analyses in a public forum. And so I do want to bring various parts of this to you at the appropriate time and with the appropriate level of dialogue that I think each of them require.
And that's much appreciated. Through you Madam Chair, just a second question. Back to the CAO or potentially to Director Bruder. Is there other property within the downtown precinct outside BDSS that may be appropriate that we could utilize for this endeavor that might allow us to, to come to a little more speed to market than maybe what BDS will allow?
Through you Madam Chair, I'll answer the first part of that. I mean, there are other properties, yes, but they're all constrained in different ways. They're not going to offer near the same opportunity as BDSS does. When we looked at those, yeah, there wasn't a high level of opportunity with other properties. So BDSS definitely represents the, the most viable option in the area.
Okay. Thank you Madam Chair. Thank you Director Bruder.
Thank you very much Counselor. Mayor Easton, please go ahead.
Thank you very much Madam Chair. I'm thinking about some of the opportunities that other municipalities have because of old hotels or out of circulation industrial buildings and some of the projects, including the bridge housing that has, has been done over the last year across the region. So my question is really, you know, when I look at the BDSS site, there's already some facilities on that site, and I see those as great opportunities. And I'm wondering, but I also think it makes the property unique, because there's a swimming pool on the site, the Lincoln Center is on the site, and I, we always talk about retail plus housing, how about, you know, putting those facilities as, as part of the, the ground floor, if you will. So how do we get to the point where we can have that kind of a conversation so that we're not building what's being built everywhere else? Because building something for people that don't have housing, but not offering them the services, and that came up, and I certainly get that, but I think we, we are having some discussions about how services are going to be provided. How do we get to the point where we can start maybe four feet off the ground or six feet off the ground in terms of ideas, as opposed to working with the absolute base, the lowest common denominator? Because people have a right to have more than a roof over their head, and I think we, we have some unique features there that, that need to be built into it. So am I foolish in thinking that this can be built in right off the bat? Or are we really just looking at dealing with the, the most minimal, which is, may or may not be what's being built in other communities? And I guess I'm directing this at the CAO, so to give him a chance to keep us on the straight and narrow.
Through you Madam Chair, to the Mayor. You know, I think we can learn from what others are doing. I don't necessarily think we have to do everything the exact same way in terms of what other municipalities are doing. I think you mentioned the fact that we've got a precinct here with some existing facilities. Mayor Easton, in terms of the senior center, in terms of the pool, and are there different ways for us to look at those things? I think we've run a couple of those different scenarios and models in terms of that site, in terms of what do we do with some of the existing infrastructure that's there, some of it being aged infrastructure, and some of it being infrastructure that was built for future additions or for future upgrades. And so I think we need to take all those into consideration when we come back to you, but I do want to manage expectations for members of council as well. All, all great things to do, a lot of the, I think modeling and, and ideas, and we've toured a number of other municipalities, from Burlington that bought a school almost the identical same size and has partnered with Brock University to move them there. I'm not giving you sticker shock and telling you the tens of millions of dollars it costs to do that, because I can't deliver on something like that unless we have a significant amount of partners at the table. So I think we want to both figure out how do we, how do we marry the opportunity we have with this site, both in the short term and long term, but at the same time, also do something here that is innovative, that does bring people to the table, and that maybe brings a different group of, of folks to the table. Like I said, you've got some people in this room right now that represent organizations that have been dealing with these types of issues for years, that also have ideas. I don't think a week goes by that someone doesn't reach out to me, either in the community of Lincoln or the broader Niagara community, that has an expertise, that wants to be involved, that wants to do something and contribute. I think it's, again, how do we figure out what's the best thing for Lincoln at this particular point in time? And I think not rushing it, as much as we want to get something done, something built, also not rushing this is also something that, you know, I'm going to caution council on, because I think we, we have an opportunity, but we have one opportunity to do this right. And so I don't necessarily want to rush it and say, okay, we're going to sell off eight acres. Charlotte would love that. I think there's a good benefit in that, pay off what we owe in terms of the, the short-term loan we took on this particular piece, but Charlotte and others around the team would also tell you that we only have one opportunity and that we do want to do something right here. So it's marrying, I think, all of those, but I will be in front of you many more times, I think, talking about this issue sooner, so that we can start to have more of a public conversation as well.
Okay, well, it's, it starts to put a lot of this into perspective. Madam Chair, my second question is really around, is moving away from the specific discussion about, about building and how we can learn more about what's going on in our community. And a lot of what we know is very informal, so this is also a question for Mr. CAO, although he may delegate it off, but, you know, the more people that we have hiding in different places and just, I don't know how these people have coped during this really, really cold weather, but I also know that we don't have any interim facilities. And it's not interim housing, it's a place to go that's warm to sleep. We don't have that. And so while we're waiting to do all this good work, that need needs to be filled. And are those people going to St. Catherine's adding to their problems? So Dr. Stobie's here tonight, he knows how these people migrate around, and so there's, I think, an accountability here around what we truly know about our own communities and what resources we may or may not have, who are our partners that can assist us with this as well. So what do we know about this? Because maybe we need to also consider resources that will get us down to the point where we have more accurate information. I do want to thank the committee, this is a, it was, this is a very good report. Thank you very much Josh for your leadership as well, but the fact that the committee is hanging in there and digging in with us is really encouraging. And if there's anybody who isn't on the committee, who should be on the committee, I think what you're hearing tonight is that there's a commitment that's coming through here that we've never had before. And so let's not lose sight of that as well. But the question that I have Madam Chair is really around, what do we know about our community at the present time, and what kind of plans do we need to put in place to keep these people safe? Because that number's not going to decrease. Because that number's not going to decrease.
Mr. CAO, would you like to take a stab at that?
Through you, Madam Chair. Why don't I start, and then definitely I'll look to the rest of the team if, if there's any additional data. And we can definitely share some of the data we have. We have some regional data with members of council. Do we have shelters in Lincoln? The answer is no. And by shelters, I mean food, a bed, something that keeps people safe overnight in this term, or in this type of weather. I would say the answer's no to that. We rely on the region, we work with our regional counterparts to provide those types of services, and there's a process by which that happens. And I think to your, to your point, Mayor, that's, that's something that is happening the closest to us would be St. Catherine's. Do we have warming centers and things we're currently looking at our own facilities, when they're open? And so I say, when they're open, they're open early in the morning till late in the evening. That, that addresses, I think, one issue, but what then happens in the evening when our facilities close at 10:00 and 11:00, and those folks that may be in our facilities trying to keep warm face themselves on the street, and face having to go somewhere else. And so, no, we don't have the right wraparound services. Earlier, I think Josh's report, a member of council highlighted, we don't have the right wraparound services, and sometimes we hear that. I think we need to create some of those wraparound services. The west part of Niagara is the fastest-growing area within the region. Why we don't have more services around here in west Niagara to support those services? Some would say, demographics are different, those we serve are different, the population is different. Does that mean we don't need services? No, it doesn't. And if we're not going to have them here, how are we going to connect people to those services, I would say is the bigger issue. We don't just need to be putting up shelters everywhere, we need to make sure that they're, where they're needed most, but we have ways to connect people within that system. And I think that's maybe where we can get better. And that's where we're, I think, maybe falling short, not just here in Lincoln or west Niagara, but I would say across many parts of Niagara. The same conversation can be had in Fort Erie with what they're experiencing, the same issue can, I think, you could, you could have, if you look above the Escarpment and Font Hill, if you look at Wayne Fleet in those areas. There are people who are finding themselves without sustainable shelter, without a home, without places to go, and so how do they get that access? Do I have the data readily available? I don't. I don't think anyone on the team this evening has it readily available, Madam Mayor, but I think we can definitely share that with members of council, and make sure we do get it, in terms of, on any given night, do we know how many people within the town of Lincoln find themselves without a place to sleep?
Good. Okay, that's, I think that's adequate, but I see, I think the context is correct, and I can see, Madam Chair, that there's some good, solid reasons for moving forward, and it may mean that we're going to have to do an in-year reconsideration with the CAO's guidance around who's doing what, and how that can change. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Easton. There being no further questions, I have a motion moved by councillor Timmers. The committee receive and file report PD-06-25 regarding Housing Select Committee Annual Update. I will now ask our deputy clerk to please open the vote.
Thank you, Chair. That is now open for voting. And I will close that, and that carries. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Devan. We now move to item nine of our agenda, which is confidential items. We have no confidential items. Item number 10 is committee remarks. Do we have any committee remarks this evening? Seeing none, there being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned at 8:15 PM.